Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please make standing for a moment of silent reflection and for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Mary Ann Thomas. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
President.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
President.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. There will be a motion this evening to amend Resolution Number 131, 2024, in Seventh Order. Dispense of the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A, Controller's Report for the month ending September 30th, 2024. 3B, Minutes to the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held September 18th, 2024. 3C, Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held October 16th, 2024. 3D, Minutes to the Composite Pension Board Meeting Held September 18th, 2024. 3E, Correspondence Received October 18th, 2024, from the Business Administration regarding a Department Budget Transfer. 3F, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Reports Received October 21st, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the Third Order items?
Yes, I have one comment on Item 3E. It seems there's an increase in unemployment insurance. Could we ask if we needed a budget transfer to cover that? Could we ask if our unemployment has been up this year or if we just underestimated in the current budget?
I'll ask that question, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Many council members have any announcements at this time?
I just have a friendly reminder. DPW is having their annual trunk or treat this Saturday at DPW Parking Lot Headquarters, and it's at 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrew.
Mr. President, we did forget to mention Guy Valvano, who was a longtime sports director with the Scranton Times. And that guy, what a gentleman and what an asset he was to the entire community. And he covered sports, high school sports, and a lot of local athletes for many, many years. He was 96-years-old, a great family man, so I just wanted to recognize him. He just passed away, and I believe his viewing is Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth Order, Citizen Participation.
First, Joan Hordwannis.
Joan Hordwannis, Scranton. That was a very interesting caucus that you had, but I hope that you're planning a part two and bring them back, because I would assume you have a lot more questions. So, but I think it was a good thing to have, and the public should pay attention. I will tell you one thing, you know, if you go down to Washington, D.C., and go to the IRS headquarters, above the entrance of the building, there are the following words: Taxes are the price we pay for civilization. And I don't know about you, but I don't know how you're going to do it, but I want someone there when I have my stroke or my heart attack. I want someone there in four minutes or less, and I'd be willing to pay for that service. But I understand your quandary, but you should continue this conversation, and it's for the benefit of the people of Scranton. Okay, I checked the city's website. Still no police collective bargaining agreement. Is any change in that?
Not until it's all combined, same as the fire department. Once it's combined, it will be up fully. Otherwise, it's the old contract and all of the arbitration awards.
Well, just to let you know, Mr. Uffberg got paid $20,000-plus changed in September, so he's chugging right along. DPW negotiations, are they on track?
Yes.
Because it's 70 days to the end of the year and when their contract runs out. And the audit, where we stand, is the Scranton Parking Authority got their crap in one shoe yet?
It's supposed to be this week. They said they'll have it this week.
How many times have they said that?
Well, that was, they said this month. So, they said they'll have it this week, and we are, well, we're involved in that a little bit too, but as soon as we receive it, it will take us about two weeks to incorporate it into ours, and then it will be finished.
Yeah, well, one of the things you need to get is a commitment from them that they'll arrange their audit services so they get that thing done before the end of September. So, we don't have this constant, you know, "Well, it's the only thing we're waiting on." That's silly. The Career Technology Center, I saw the Item 5B where the police department's going to donate a vehicle they no longer need, and I think that's a great idea. Now, Mr. McCandrew, you're a faculty member there. CTC, is that a nonprofit?
Yeah.
I would like to, you know, people say, "Well, you know, payment in lieu of taxes," and that's all fine and dandy, but you know, a lot of these nonprofits, schools like the CTC, Johnson College, so on and so forth, Lackawanna College, there's a significant brain trust within these organizations, and they have the opportunity, if we ask them, I think as a city, for, you know, providing rather than money, services in kind. You know, you were talking the other week about the possibility of them helping out the lookout to do a masonry project, if that's possible. And there are other ways they can serve. So, I don't really have a problem with the city donating, you know, a used vehicle, which probably wouldn't bring much on the market anyway, to the school, it would benefit the students, but I'd like to see closer relationships with these nonprofits, where if there's some service they can provide to the city or to citizens, that we aren't shy about asking for that kind of help.
Well, I can give you another example, so...
Go ahead.
And first of all, we're high school students, so we're not Lackawanna College.
I understand that, but your faculty is well-trained.
So, the illustration design class reached out to me, and I reached out to the Bureau of Elections. So, you know the stickers I just voted?
Yep.
So, the students took on that project to create their own.
Yep.
Maybe five, a variety of five, and signs that say, "This work is done by the Career Technology Students," you know. So, and I'm going to get them to the Bureau of Elections, but that's just another in-kind project, and it stimulates, you know, creativity in their content area.
And it ends up being a win-win situation. You know, it's great for the students, it's great for the school, and it helps local government. And I think we need to get more creative and thinking down that, because chasing pilots is, it's not going to happen, because they've got their budget concerns, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, Councilwoman Norma Jeffries. And it's been a while since I've been here. I've had some health issues, but thank God they're moving along. But this isn't, wasn't on what I was going to speak about tonight, but it is on my agenda to speak about in future meetings, because I did listen to Council as I was home, and I didn't like some of the things that I was hearing. So, tonight on the program, it does enlist the conduct of City Council, and that's a concern to me, because I will be speaking about it in further meetings. Tonight, I want to talk about the homeless community. After being unable to attend Council for several weeks, I have been watching it on the ECTV, which they do a great job, and I wanted to know the status of the homeless community. Since I had not heard of anything, I'm sure that myself, as well as the city residents, want to know what's going on with our homeless population. As the nights have gotten colder, most of us go to our wall and turn our thermostats up, or we say, "Oh, I'm not going to turn it up tonight, because I don't want my bill to go up." Or they get another blanket, or they put on their flannel sheets on their bed. The homeless population don't have those choices, and I wanted to know about that, so I kept listening to see if Council or if something was going to be in the papers about where the committee that was developed for the homeless community and what the status was. I did not hear anything. So, I always think about my church, and we do a homeless project, a sleeping bag project. And if anyone wants to know more about that, they can Google that, and they'll see that we, we at our church meet once a month, and we make the sleeping bags for, we take them down to Keystone Missions. And it's just a bunch of, no, we're not all retired. In my job, I fill the needles, because they really have to go through all those layers of material. So, I fill the needles, and the other people go around, they set a table, something like this, and make sleeping bags. We do about four or five a month. So, previously, I'd asked about showers, and I was told that the homeless people can take a shower at Weston Field. You know, when you're home and you're doing things between your computer and Googling things and looking up articles in the paper and asking people, I did find out that the city offers the missions shower coupons, $2.50. I mean, come on, do they really have to pay to take a shower? I know that water costs money. I know that whatever supplies they supply costs money, but $2.50, you know, it seems like somewhere along the way, that price can be absorbed. So, then I started reading about the different things in the paper, between Wilkes-Barre, Allentown. They're doing great jobs in other cities, but I don't see anything in the papers about Scranton. In Wilkes-Barre, they've begun to renovate buildings to house the homeless, and Keystone Missions has a facility in Wilkes-Barre that houses overnight people. And if I recall, they give them an evening and meal, showers, and a place to sleep, and then breakfast the next morning. Headlines for Wilkes-Barre: Construction Begins on Permanent Homeless Shelter in Wilkes-Barre. The article goes on to list the address and what will be provided at that facility. The new facility will provide stability and essential services for those in need. The new shelter will have space for 20 beds and will also feature showers and laundry facilities. Construction is expected to be completed at Thanksgiving, before the cold weather sets in. The new shelter will be handicapped accessible. They also have a place, Ruth's Place. I did see, I was home, and I saw the young lady come up to the podium. She was homeless, and she was concerned about her safety. In Wilkes-Barre, they have a place called Ruth's Place, and it's a shelter for women that are experiencing homelessness, and they provide shelter for, and they've been doing it for 20 years, 20 years. I was surprised when I read that. And so, I'm still, again, I'm looking for things for Scranton. I'm looking for things from Scranton. I didn't see anything. Not sure this young lady, how she made out, if anybody was able to get her services or not, I don't know. So, then, Dr. Rothschild, maybe you can address this in Fifth Order. We had talked about the number of homeless in the city, the list of the facilities that are available, so that I thought we were going to have a homeless czar or someone to oversee all the facilities in Scranton, so that they can work together. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm over my time. And so, anyway, I stand here tonight, you know, just concerned, and just to think, when you go to bed at night, and you're nice and comfy and warm, everybody doesn't have that opportunity. And I know I think about it, and I'm just very blessed that I can go to the wall and turn my thermostat up, that I can go to my chest and pull out another blanket. Everyone cannot do that. And this, I have to end with saying that, but for the grace of God, go I. Now, I don't know if I could take a few more minutes for Doris Goszlaske.
I, we're already gone over.
We're over?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Norma.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Last name N., right?
N., last name N. I don't know who signed the next one.
The gentleman in the back that he's...
Paul? Could it be Paul?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Councilman and Lady. My name is Paul Nortkunis, I live in Scranton. Been with me, I had two strokes. Okay. Several things now. Let me see. I went to...
Excuse me, can you, yeah, there.
Let me see.
Thank you.
I took a walk up, there's no car, took the bus up there, it pissed down your dentist. I decided to walk down for exercise. I saw 40 houses that were dilapidated, litter filled, junk windows smashed, wires hanging down, cables, telephones. This is, ah, folks. I recommend to say you go to every court in city, every court and street in the neighborhood and say this, I noticed a lot, take up these junk houses, run down abandoned places, let's say it's litter, tired of litter, litter blowing around. Come on, folks. Just thinking on Wayne Avenue, there used to be a little bus, little bus, 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 forgive me, bus, shuttle there. It was all torn up for a long time. They sell paint now. People are parking there. They're getting free parking, apparently. The buses have to stop there in the lane, in the lane. Buses, the buses, it backs up, that the go-around, that causes congestion on Lackawanna Avenue. Could the city put a sign there or calls, say, "No parking, bus station only"? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Good evening, Councilman Les Spindler, City Resident, homeowner. Last time I was here, I talked about people, it's Scranton High School parking illegally, picking up their kids, where it says "No Parking," and they're still doing it. There's a bus stop there for one or two buses, and past there, you're not supposed to park. There's no parking signs up there, and the people are still parking, and they take up half the lane, half the traffic lane. That's, I don't know if that's a police issue, if that's a parking enforcement issue, but should be taken care of. Next thing. Really disturbed last week, when I heard Lackawanna County is raising our taxes 33%. I know that has nothing to do with City Council. I'm just hoping, when the city budget comes before you, I hope there's no raise, because we just can't take it. There's a lot of people like me that's on Social Security. We don't get a 33% raise every year in our pay. It's ridiculous. If the city raises it, I don't know what, people are going to lose their houses. It's unbelievable. Hopefully, the, I know the county's going to have some meetings, hopefully they'll listen to people and, they can make, have some kind of solution. Make cuts in people's salaries or whatever, but we can't take a big raise like that. Yesterday, I know the Second Gentleman Doug Emhoff was here, and saw the mayor following around like a little puppy dog. She never met a camera she didn't like. She should be here in the office, doing her job and looking at the budget, seeing what they could do, so we don't get a tax hike. But there she was, right on camera. Next thing. Yesterday, I'm driving by the Houdini Museum on Main Avenue, and there's, they have these long concrete blocks on the sidewalks, so nobody parks there. Somehow, one of them got pushed out into the street. It's not too far out, but it's near the curb, but those things must weigh a couple hundred pounds. So, had to be like a couple people must have been doing mischief and just picked it up and put it out in the street. You could see it, but at night, I don't know how good you could see it. If somebody hits that with their car, they're going to wreck their car. So, I don't know if we could get to move that back out to the sidewalk. I'm surprised the museum hasn't said something about it, because I've seen it for the last two days. Don't know how long it's been out there, but that's a safety issue. Lastly, I was telling Chief Judge before he walked out, yesterday, I'm coming down Greenridge Street at 8:30 in the morning, at the corner of Greenridge and Capous, there was a fairly good car accident. Both cars were really damaged, and there was a fire truck there. No police car yet, no ambulance, and they already had that stuff spread down, because there were liquids, fluids on the, on the street. I said to John, I said, "My God," I said, "I drove away from there saying that was pretty impressive." The fire, fire truck got there, did their job, and before the police even got there or an ambulance, so. I said, "Kudos to the Scranton Fire Department for doing a great job." And he told me there was also that accident in the same corner last night. There's a traffic light there, and I don't know what the problem is. People probably aren't paying attention. But again, kudos to Scranton Fire Department, they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Mr. Waldenberg, will you let the Traffic Division of the Police Department know about that concrete barrier in the road to see if it's them or if DPW can push it back?
I will, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you. Ron Omen?
Good evening, Council. I got this letter Saturday from 341 Washington, asking me to vote for Harris. So evidently, Walshell doesn't watch this program or something, I don't know. These two, they got a complete blatant lie in here, saying Mr. Trump, they quote, "Mr. Trump," wants to end the war. He hasn't made a statement like that. He, he hasn't, he's joined the vehicle in Washington that knows there has to be some closure to this, this conflict. This war is going nowhere except bankrupting America, if you ask me. Our money can't, we can't keep pouring it in there, which is what Harris promised. You know, this woman can't even have an intelligent interview without it being edited to her understanding on Fox last week, and this is somebody you people want to have elected. And a man made 30 trips paid by China and doesn't really explain him. Told his troops to go on two months before, "You guys go to war, I'm staying here." He is a blatant coward, like I said last week. He's disgusting to me. Harris is playing, she can only go so far without the power behind the Democratic Party supporting her, and there is a power. That's the power that fired Biden. He didn't want to quit. Who knows what would have happened if he'd stayed in there with, with all the money that is going to the, from the Democratic Party. There's no way you could build millions of new homes and give $25,000 to move in, give tax abatement so we can have a taco stand on every corner in America. If it was possible, this administration would have it all for the illegals anyway. Yesterday's paper, television showed thousands more watching, walking down here. No English-speaking criminal, diseased people. Every disease known by man been brought into this country the last few years. There's polio in New York State. There's diseases they don't want to talk about in the paper, overrunning young people. I, I have a friend in Detroit, that was a retired college professor, and he told me, he believes the first thing illegals are going to start doing if they vote is take over school boards. Once that happens, America is gone. It'd be worse than the college, these misfits that teach in college. I got one real quick question. If you have to speak English and read English, write English to vote, what do we need interpreters for? You don't know what the, the interpreters are telling people. This is outrageous. If someone can't vote, they ought to bring their own interpreter or stay home. And I'd like to know what right they have to mail letters like this. It's a blatant lie in there, and they're using this bleeding-heart approach from this tragedy going on in the Ukraine, asking for votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smurl. Rick Little?
Hi, I'm Rick Little from Scranton. It's very disturbing to me, just, it's always disturbing to me, just watching the media and how they're doing, and I, when I saw that Kamala Harris said she worked at McDonald's, and then I see the proof from McDonald's, that she never worked there, that's disturbing, and then people get upset when Donald Trump is working at McDonald's. I read the Times Tribune and saw that some big law firm was suing Tom Coyne over his discovery of personal materials out in the garbage. The community has to be better than that. There, there's carrots and there's sticks, but the stick in this city and county seems to be lawfare, and lawfare goes way up to the top. I mean, people, oh, God, I don't understand my phone. All right. Yeah, they got everything going through the phones in the legal community, and you don't understand it, you know. People are talking about the homeless problem. The homeless problem starts with housing. Scranton Housing Authority, there has to be a communication between this body and the mayor and the Board of Commissioners of Scranton Housing Authority, because I've been going to the meetings, and it, I mean, it just doesn't seem like democracy to me. You should have the minutes of that meeting immediately, you know. They make me wait a month to get them. But this thing about, you know, instituting lawsuits, I mean, I, for years, the people from Scranton Housing Authority kept me busy, and, and this is after they, they took my stuff, locked it away. I called the police department. The police department says, "See the manager," and then when I get it, you know, it, it's a runaround. There's enough resources to take care of everything, but it's just the deceit in how it's, how they prosecute people, that's the stick. People, old people can't, there's, there's no lawyers to help them, there's, there's no lawyers to help Tom, Tom Coyne and his thing. They get you into this, this mesh where they, they know every character, they, they're all part of their evidence. Like when I was in Scranton Housing Authority, they, they just put in all, you know, millions of dollars worth of surveillance cameras, and then they, they take me to court... of dollars worth of surveillance cameras, and then they take me to court and, you know, they can deny it. You know, the health and safety things that people are constructing, I'm always hearing about health and safety, it's only for the health and safety of the people that are running the government. It looks to me that way because it's not protecting. I mean, I had people breaking into my door all the time. And I was severe PTSD, and my nerves were like that, and I'm doing a lawsuit to keep my kid in the family courts, which is a whole other malady of, you know, bad law. There has to be, I mean, how do all these agencies have so much money to spend on lawyers? I mean, like I said a couple weeks ago, I mean, that's the only business that is booming, but it's destroying the community. There should be a discussion, a discussion of how to do this. But around here, it's like, you know, I do a right-to-know, and the head of Lackawanna County throws me out of the building and tells the sheriff, "Never come in here again" for a FOIL request, that I went to Matt Cartwright's office and they told me, "Yeah, you need a FOIL. You can't have a right-to-know." It's too much, too much law, too much law.
Thank you. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer, taxes paid. Okay, let's get to it. Two weeks ago, I made a comment that the Harrison Avenue bridges are cracking, and any crack in a concrete surface is going to get water in. So it doesn't matter how, you don't have to turn it into a Manhattan project, but please, somebody get up there and put some grout into it and seal it up.
Dave, last week, I informed everyone that the state was there, they re-inspected it, and they gave us a list of what their corrections are going to be, but they know about it and they were there.
Okay, that's great, great. Recycling, it's time that we go with two separate barrels for plastic bottles and glass and steel cans or aluminum cans. It would greatly reduce the chances that we're going to be hauling that up to the trash. It's kind of a shame with how much you go through to even recycle it in the first place. Okay, East Mountain Firehouse, I didn't have them in order here. I think it'd be great to keep it right where it's at, even if we had to get a little bit of land by eminent domain. And it is a lot easier to get down a hill than it is up an icy hill. And it could result in somebody maybe not making it out. It's important. And we already did put money into that building to repair roofs and stuff, if I'm not mistaken. Now, on tourism, down at Steamtown, we have a rail museum. I don't know how long ago, but it was quite a while ago, the air conditioning and heating broke down. And some of their buildings are not open. In 2014, we took all but one engine off the tracks, and that was finished up maybe a year later or two. It's just the yard tender day, you can take a little ride on. But there are no steam excursions out of Scranton. And anyway, back maybe like 2010, I used to see six railroad cars, and you had to get on there and grab a seat because if you did, you were going to get the junkiest seat in the house. Somebody stole my seat one time. I came all the way back from Delaware Water Gap with the springs sticking in a place I didn't really appreciate. I felt like throwing them out the window, but being somewhat civilized, I didn't. But after, after the election, I'll bring this up again, and maybe I can collect a few more facts for you. That used to be a big playground for the wife and I, but I can't be exposed to people because of a whole bunch of personal conditions. So if I can open windows on a rail car, I just went out on an excursion, great. But if I, if I'm cooped up in October 31st or whatever, then it's out, you know? Too many people who are skeptical of vaccinations and stuff, and I don't need their maladies. Now, we're coming up on voting. And what I would advise everybody, be pragmatic. You better find out what Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, Veterans Care, and a whole bunch of other things, issues have that, they're trying to phase it out with that 2025. So I'm sorry, if Trump wins, your level have 40 million people roaming around the country homeless and without anything to back up on. And it's just a shame. But actually, you know, if people don't familiarize themselves with what the issues are, and they run out and vote on a bunch of junk that they heard off the television. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. That's all for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Good evening, counsel. Lee Morgan. I got here a little late today. I happened to go to the county meeting on the 33% tax increase. And I'd like to say to the residents that when ECTV was created, it was a public access channel. And when the federal government created that law, that channel was created so the public could meet, have open discussions, and try to push their government in a direction and bring elected officials in outside this format where you could actually have a conversation with somebody and get some answers. And if you remember the tax group, they'd bring people in running for office and ask questions. And that was the format that should have been followed. Now, Scranton had more than one public access channel. But, you know, where we find ourselves today is that we've turned the public access channel into a propaganda channel for government. And we really don't need a propaganda channel. All right? We need a channel, and, you know, I say to the people in the neighborhood associations that have been begging for money from elected officials for the last 50 years and acting like lapdogs, that maybe it's time to change. Okay? Maybe it's time to make demands. Because the people need access to a public access channel. Now, I didn't get into federal court yet, and I've been trying for a little while. I don't think the judge really wants to hear the case. But it'll be whatever it is. But the city government has abused its discretion by doing the things it's done with that channel, which means the elected officials. Okay? And when you look at what that channel was designed to do and what its purpose was and what's happened to it and what's happened to the $1.5 or $1.6 million the city is receiving in franchise fee money, and you take a look at what's happening in the county and the city, it's because the people have no voice. You know, the election's coming. I listened to a couple people come here today talking about the election that's coming up. There's an awful lot of disinformation. I just hope that the American people vote strictly for Trump, okay? Because all the make-believe stuff they've been talking about here has been covered in the press outside of America. There's no plans to cut Social Security. There's no, Trump's not involved with 2025. Okay? Harris is totally incompetent. And people who know her and people who were elected officials and judges have stated just how incompetent she is. And, you know, the American people will make up their own decisions on what they want to do. But what I have to say to the people is, look at the pain you're experiencing now from our local government, city council, the county commissioners. You know, it's, it's just one stone of incompetent government stacked on another stone. Okay? And then when you get down the road so far, you're so deep into quicksand that you don't even know you're there. Okay? I mean, when you take a look at the way government functions, the people need a change. They're demanding it. I say, go out and vote. Hopefully, everybody will vote for Trump, but vote as you please. As far as being an informed voter, don't count on the press or the media to tell you anything because it's just a mess. And when you look at your, the way you're living your life, look at your government. Okay? And look at the neighborhoods in the city. And you can tell that there's something wrong, vastly wrong. And when you take a look at your paycheck and see the amount of taxes you're paying and the amount of government debt, you should really know there's something wrong. And when you look at the educational system and children graduating from school that can't read and write, I mean, if that doesn't tell you a problem, it's not about Democrats and Republicans, it's about your standard of living. And in order to change that, you need a platform so you can communicate. And that's what ECTV was created for, to give the ordinary working people a platform to bring elected officials in and to bring change to their communities. But instead, politicians hijacked it and made it into something like a propaganda channel, like something Germany might have had or the North Koreans had had. And that's why this country's falling apart. These were the people you elected.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Coyne, Manuka. Greetings, members of counsel and the community. Counsel President, why do you require a name before we can speak at this podium?
For record.
For the record, okay. But the city contends that a name is protected, and it may cause embarrassment to someone, so that's protected. So a participant being mandated to expose themselves, in my case, the city puts forth in an argument that every time you ask the public for a name as a requirement for protected speech before this body, the speech offers them exposure and embarrassment. In turn, by asking a name, you're violating the privacy rights of every member at this podium, and you are individually liable as you proceed with knowledge and forethought. The argument is factually absurd, yet it's why I am here this evening. By this time, no doubt you're aware, the city of Scranton is suing me. And I would reasonably expect that one or two council members, or maybe the entire council, has gone into or will go into an executive session to circle the wagons. But four out of the five members of council, except for President Smurl, a supermajority, apologized for the city conduct and declared that I did the right thing. So far as to evoke the mantra, "You see something, you say something." But as our leader, Mayor Cognetti, the warrior for justice and transparency, has continually, be it misconduct in the license and inspection, the former director of OEC being arrested while driving without a license, or tossing the files of people's privacy at the curb, has chosen to pick the path of, "You see something involved with the city. Shut up. Don't rock the boat. Citizens deserve nothing." I did not explain, it was not explained well in the Times, as the reporter did not have the material available, but the anti-SLAP law was put in place because a government or entity should not be able to litigate people into silence and weaponize it to stop speech. They have staff, lawyers, hire outside firms, and have an unlimited budget unlike the citizens. Though these are not my direct words, I chose to use, I choose to use them. The city decided to sue a modern-day use of the truncheon. And I reply, because while the truncheon may be used in lieu of conversation, words will retain power. Words offer the means to meaning, and for those who listen, the enunciation of truth. And the truth is, there is something terribly wrong in this city, isn't there? Words offered by the citizens are sometimes that enunciation of truth. Some would say, "Be quiet. Save it for the court," and not the court of public opinion. But the public opinion, an informed public, will direct those who may listen to vote and will determine how the city is run after the next election cycle. The administration tainted the well by starting out with the truncheon. But there are members of council, I would agree, to act as mediation. But silence is all the city desires. The simple truth is, when an administration refused to provide any information, the public requested, including Joan, their hand had to be enforced at my peril. All I would have asked was a statement under oath that all parties exposed were notified of the breach, and it would have been done. I took photos because I knew without them, the city would likely, be likely to say they were boxes of old menus and other items. And since I had proof, they were forced to confront the truth. I'm sure if anyone now asks, they'll be told, "The issue is under litigation and it can't be discussed." How convenient. I'm still open to mediation. And as the road may be long, I am ready for the trip. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tom, great job tonight. Nobody has to be singled out for wanting to do the right thing. Majority of this council said that he did the right thing. When you have public information from employees, former employees, that sit out there for five hours, and he did the right thing to do the best he can with the help of Dr. Rothschild, he should be commended for that, not served, not having to go into court. He wants to know what the importance is and to get answers as far as the protection of those employees. You know, when identity theft is on the rise on a yearly basis, it's important that we secure those files and do the right thing. Tom Coyne did the right thing. He's being sort of punished for it, like a slap on the wrist. Well, my opinion, it's completely wrong, and so is this administration. I'm going to talk about the elephants in the room here. You know, we went through more calls over the weekend. Our police department takes six calls an hour, 137 a day, $50,000 a year. They need to be safe upon doing so. These calls are more extreme or more severe. And I think that we need to address this problem head-on. You know, something else head-on was the chief's son's truck into a tree. You know, I have a few questions there. How did he get home? Why was he there at 4:00 in the morning? And if he hit a tree, was he charged with anything? You know, when you become a police officer, you have to hold yourself to higher standards in order to hold the public to higher standards. Hopefully, somebody here on this council would address that. I stand before you a humble man who really cares about the city and its direction. This isn't a direction that I anticipated. It's not a direction that I foresee. We had a meeting with a crime wok- We had a meeting with Crime Watch on Thursday night, and one of the issues we addressed was a local housing, and it was the Westside Hotel. And the day after, they found somebody deceased. You know, when we put a bunch of people from drug court, adult probation, adult parole into one place, it's not a good climate for them. And the calls are becoming more extreme there, and I hope it could actually get addressed. It's alarming to know that this day and age, our children cannot go to school without being worried about crossing the street. We still don't have crosswalks for our children. You know, when we have crosswalks, it's easier for people to get around. The police officers could actually make stops if they go in through the intersection. It slows people down. And, you know, when there's more accidents because we don't have the safety measure in place, it becomes an issue because a lot of times, these officers have to go out three or four and just even direct traffic. The easiest way to get an individual is with a traffic stop, as opposed to, you know, being in there and having the direct traffic. You know, we're looking at all of these issues, but we're looking at them the wrong way. I think that we could actually do better with so many things. I feel that this isn't the direction that we need to be in. And Dr. Rothschild, last week, I mentioned about not being from the area. You know, it's one thing to make poor decisions coming from out of town, but personally, I've sent stuff to you on a personal level for your community, and you really address them immediately. You know, there's right ways to do things, there's wrong ways to do things, and I'd like to thank you for doing the right thing. I hope that throughout the rest of the year, we continue to do the right thing because together, come next year, change is coming. Thanks and good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Anderson.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. I want to thank Chief Judge for being here this evening, Dr. Hinckley, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name from Fitch and Associates. Mr. Knight from Fitch and Associates. It's obvious there was a tremendous amount of time and effort that went into this feasibility study. It appears as though it was done extremely well. There'll be a lot of hard questions asked. Ultimately, I hope that we can arrive at a solution that will benefit the city as a whole and allow us to make sure that we're protecting the health, safety, and welfare of all of our residents, but still maintain, be fiscally sound. So it's a balancing act. This isn't, we can't be making knee-jerk decisions, so we need to really sit down at a table and learn as much as we can before an ultimate decision is made on this important topic. So I want to thank those three gentlemen for being here tonight. Unfortunately, we only had 45 minutes. We probably could have spent three and a half hours discussing that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I have a few comments. One thing, this Thursday, the 24th, at 6:00 PM at the Kaiser Valley Community Center, there's going to be a meeting on the Kaiser Valley stormwater. So I'd encourage residents that are interested in that topic to come out to that meeting to be informed on that. I did get an update. We had an address over on Dickens Street for a repair there. There was a one call that came out. The ground was marked. But what I'm being told is that they're waiting for the North Scranton Tri-Park Water, Stormwater Project to begin to fix that. And that was the update I've received last on that, on that address on Dickens Street. A few weeks ago, we talked about 902 West Elm Street. There was a basin there that needed replacement. When getting into that work, the water company found that 165 feet of damaged line need to be repaired, so that is going to be repaired. And also, the 2600 block of Washburn Street, there's about 150 feet of pipe that's going to be repaired in that area as well. Last week, I got a few calls about refuse collection in West Scranton around the All Saints area. Mr. Voldenberg, I'm going to ask if you could reach out to the administration or our new DPW director, see if there's any kind of possible changes that occurred with the DPW refuse collection. The garbage trucks in and around the school at arrival time are intermingled in the traffic, and it's being, it's rough for the cars to get in and out. And it's something that I haven't heard in several years that has been an issue, but it seems to be an issue in the last two or three weeks. I waited this week to see if it was the same, and I got those messages from individuals that this week it was also an issue there, that I don't know if the timing needs to be adjusted for school arrival, but it seems to be something that's becoming an issue there in and around that school.
I'll look into it, sir.
Thank you. While I'm on that, is it possible to ask for an update on Rubicon if we plan on rolling out this system? Any kind of an update as to if it's going to be implemented as the contract does end in December of 2024?
I'll ask.
Thank you. And if we could just clarify that end date. So according to our paperwork, it's December of 2024, but can we just clarify that that is the end of that contract?
I will.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Smurl, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First, just also wanted to comment on what we're here tonight about the EMS feasibility study. So I do appreciate Chief Judge and the others coming in to explain their study findings. I do wish we had more time for the findings as well because I am really interested and will be looking carefully at the PowerPoint and the information that was provided to us. But I think we will have a lot of follow-up questions. It is important that we have the discussion and find out if it is feasible or not. But yeah, I still don't stand anywhere specifically because I think there's a lot more to know about this topic. I also wanted to mention something that I had asked about last week, the HUB test. Not sure if I missed this response at some point, but I think at the end of September, they did provide us with an update, so I'm just going to repeat it in case others had missed it too. But with regards to the HUB test, the issue stalling this project is a lack of support documentation at the Lackawanna County Assessor's Office for nonprofits, which is, I think, about 158 properties. Collection of this documentation is an assessor's office responsibility. The city had a meeting with Lackawanna County and the Scranton School District on September 4th to determine how the assessor's office will collect this information, and the assessor's office is drafting a letter to be included with the mailings to nonprofit property owners as part of all reassessment mailings to city property owners. So that's still where we stand on the HUB test. And then to respond to Ms. Jeffries and her question regarding the unsheltered and homeless population within Scranton, I haven't received any additional updates. Last, I was told that there was going to be a meeting taking place, I think, a few weeks ago, but that was when I asked about it, and I didn't ever receive a time, a place, a formal invite. And then others who I know who were also supposed to be a part of that task force did not receive anything. So I'm not sure if that, that meeting took place. I haven't gotten anything, and I've asked for meeting minutes in the past. So, Mr. Voldenberg, if you can please contact the mayor and her administration if a meeting did take place, if I could receive an update, or council could, so that we can relay that to the public. And I definitely understand the concerns and the urgency with colder weather impending and, you know, how that will affect this population and what steps we'll be taking as a city. I know we're looking into a few different options, but like I said, unfortunately, I don't have any further information on where we're at with that, but I will make sure to get it.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. So again, I'm in agreement. Thank you, Chief Judge, Fitch and Associates, for coming with their presentation tonight, but continued dialogue needs to occur and take in all considerations with regards, you know, health, safety, and welfare, and the needs and interests of every party involved. So that's going to require a lot of dialogue, I believe. On 1203, 1205 Euclid Avenue, there's a curb that needs to be put back. All right? And this gentleman reached out to me, he says, "It's been paved twice and promised twice to put the curb back because every time it rains..." He sent me a picture, Mr. Voldenberg, that I'll send to you. His whole front yard is washed out. So we need to have the departments involved to take a look at that or that are responsible, and let's check into that. Also, a stop, street, street and stop signs on Rock Street and High Park Ave. I guess there was a new power line installed. They sent me a picture. It looks like the stop sign is 12 feet high, and it's no longer visible. And I think the old pole remains, which has been an issue that Mr. Schuster's been bringing up as long as I'm here, about when they replace a power pole or, and the power lines, they leave the old pole there. Looks terrible, and it's definitely, it's definitely, you know, a line-of-sight issue with actually seeing the stop sign and the street signs themselves. So let's please take a look at that, if you can send that over.
I will, sir.
Back in July, and then again this September, or previous September, I received concerns about Carney Court. And this is behind the penalty box. And it's between the 3200 block of Pittston and the 3200 block of Greenwood. It's the last block before music, so it's not technically music. What was requested, and, you know, this gentleman, I remember him saying he went through protocol, he went through 311, got no response. And he came to me, and I remember bringing it up, and all he wanted, because he sent pictures, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Voldenberg, but I know you took care of it for me, the watch children's signs are faded, and it's a very busy court. All is asked, which is a reasonable ask, is some new watch children's signs in that court. So it's July, August, September, it still hasn't been done. If you can please check, you know, the status of that.
I'll follow up, sir.
And also, so on 1138 Einan Street, next to Willard School, there's a lot there that was been brought up all summer, and I brought it up maybe twice, once before we went on break, maybe once after. I'm not sure, but the gentleman who reaches out to me all the time, and this is a yearly thing, it's not been touched. They haven't done anything. And also, right up the street, that hole that a lot of people were talking about near Hampton, on Hampton, with the barricades, it's still, you know, a safety issue. The barricades are actually knocked down now, so that safety issue remains with that hole. And, you know, there's a lot of kids between Willard and the high school, so can we please get a final status on that? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. This is a follow-up from code enforcement since our last council meeting on requests that were sent in. They have since last week towed 24 vehicles, issued nine quality-of-life tickets, and 10 vehicles removed, were actually moved by the homeowners themselves when code enforcement went and spoke with them. 37 other vehicles were tagged again this week. And then this past Friday, the motor home that was in a yard at 21 Prospect Avenue, that was also removed. And a vehicle that had a complaint, 630 Cherry Street, that was removed by the Scranton Police Department, and another one on 540 Alder Street, that was also towed. So thank you to Scranton Police Traffic Division and the Code Enforcement Department. That's it, Mr. McCandrick. Or I'm sorry, Mr. Voldenberg.
That's okay.
Thanks.
5B for introduction and ordinance. Authorizing the Scranton Police Department to donate a used police vehicle to the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for the purchase of street cameras in qualified census tract areas.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Voldenberg, could we ask what census tract areas, how many cameras we're thinking about, and what the anticipated future costs are for data, data storage, and upkeep of these cameras?
I'll ask those questions, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
On the question, I think this is going to be money well spent, especially in light of some of the issues that we've been having in the city in terms of, you know, gang activity and just as far as covering health, safety, and welfare. We have cameras there. They tend to be a deterrent because nobody wants to be on candid camera because it makes it that much easier for them to get snagged when they're doing things that they shouldn't be doing. So I think this is a good idea.
Thank you. And also, those cameras, I believe they're going to be at Connell Park, and I believe there is internet service up through that park now, and it'll be all backed down to the police department, like the other cameras. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5D for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds to deliver comprehensive engineering, design, and construction services for the Weston Fields Gate Park.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5E for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for splash pad equipment and enhancements to Capous Avenue Park Playground.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm thrilled to see that this is going to move forward. It's greatly needed in that part of the city. I think it'll be a great enhancement for the children and young adults in that part of the city, so it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. King. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 131, 2024. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant for up to $350,000 to be used towards the City of Scranton pre-design, design, and construction oversight for fire engine house number 10.
I make a motion to amend Resolution Number 131 of 2024 as follows. The fifth Whereas Clause is amended to read, "The funding will be used to modernize and improve the fire station's infrastructure at or near its current location on the East Mountain, ensuring it meets current safety standards and operational needs to better serve the community."
Second.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
As amended.
Oh, I'm sorry. As amended. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A as amended, legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Marie?